I trust everybody heard that. So we're gonna go ahead and get started. I like to turn it over to Cody for some opening remarks and then we'll do some introductions.
Excellent. We'll just get this going with the calling the meeting to order. Paulo, may we please have the roll call?
Commissioner Cornet.
Here.
Commissioner Case.
Here.
Commissioner Light.
Here.
Commissioner Grant.
Here.
Commissioner Penya. Absent. Commissioner Pippenich. Commissioner Portella. Absent. Mayor Mays.
I'm here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Ring.
Here.
Counselor Randall.
Here.
Counselor Richardson.
Here.
Counselor Runyon.
Here.
Excellent. Strong group. The Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Thank you. Next, the approval of the agenda. If all have reviewed the agenda, may I please have a motion to approve said agenda with a second?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion has been made.
Second.
And second, all in favor of approving the agenda, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Next is the discussion item. I'll turn it over to Mr. Mays and we will get it going.
Okay. I suppose we should turn it over to the staff at this point.
Yeah.
Want to introduce our consultants and.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do. So, good evening, everyone. Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. Just want to give you a little blurb here. We provided a memo for you as well as some additional documents here and just kind of a rundown. Beginning this last spring, the city started an update to an Economic Development Opportunities Analysis. This work is being coordinated with consulting firm MIG. And we've had three meetings with an advisory committee up to this point. And this evening, I will be turning it over to Matt Hasty, Jessa Miller, and Ariane Colombo, who are gonna, who are consultants working through this. This is a joint session. This is really, they're gonna, they're gonna share some slides. We're gonna go over what we've done so far up to date with our advisory committee, but we want this very much to be a conversation, a discussion as we move forward. The eventual outcome of all of this is in, is the adoption, is an adoption of this EOA with associated comprehensive plan amendments. Some of your counselors are probably very familiar. Well, maybe not familiar with how long it's been. 2007 is the last time that the city updated their EOA. There were some brief updates to that in 2011. We started a process about 2018, 2019, 2020. It was kind of a long-winded process over a couple of years. Back in, I think it was 22, a council decided to not move forward at that time with an adoption. So in that period of time, reworking it, data has changed, development has occurred, so it really required, instead of just brushing that off and bringing it back forward, it really required an overhaul. There's a lot that's happened. One of the most notable developments that's happened is Google's Gore facility, which is a 90-acre piece of land in our port. So that has really kind of shifted the numbers of what's developable, vacant land, and what's developable, what's vacant. So we'll get further into that. I'll let Matt and his team take it away, but I just appreciate everybody for being here this evening, especially council. I understand you take August off and looks like we have a full team here, so I really do appreciate your, your time this evening.
Before Matt.
All right. Thank you.
Hang on just a second. Could you tell us who was on the advisory committee?
I can, yeah. So I will be honest about it. We had quite a few people that were involved, and I don't think schedules entirely lined up all the time. But we did have Lisa Farquharson of the Chamber, Jamie Mason with the Adventist Health, Stacy Cooper with Cooper Cherry, Cooper Cherry Orchards, Andrew Danny's with McKed, Nate Stice with the Governor's Office, Greg Price from the Small Business Development Commission, Todd Carpenter, local business order owner, Allison Turner, who is the owner of Scookum Outfitters, and I believe she is now the Chair of Main Street, Andrea Klass with the Executive Director of the Port, Scott Hagie, our County Commissioner, Blanca Flores, who is a local Realtor with Widnemir, Randy Anderson with the School District, Deborah Whitefoot with Natchitouana Housing, Brad Ellis of formerly the Cherry Growers, Pacific Coast Producers, as well as Dan Spots. He just couldn't get away long enough after retiring, and I think he's even on, joining us this evening on Zoom. So that was kind of the rundown, as well as we had assistance from city staff, Sandy Freund, our Senior Planner, as well as Jake Anderson, our Economic Development Officer.
Thank you.
One other question. Wasn't it about a year ago, building, buildable lands inventory? Was that the one we did a year and a half ago, maybe?
Yeah, so in 2000, yeah, so in 2003, we did the residential buildable lands inventory, and then this time around, it's the employment buildable lands inventory. But then in 2022, I think maybe what you're remembering is that that was another employment buildable land. So when you're looking at the either employment land or residential land, you're gonna do a buildable lands inventory for both. So this one will be focused on that, that employment land, but this is kind of the carryover. As I mentioned, we started a process in like 2018, 2018 to really 2022, and there was like starts and stops. There was an employment buildable lands at that point, and that's what with the data and the development that has occurred, that's the data that has been updated since that last time around. You bet. And with that, yeah, we'll turn it over to Matt.
All right. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right. Well, thanks for having us here this evening. Really appreciate it, even though we're, we're here virtually. Glad to see you here. So we'll walk through a presentation. We'll kind of tag team it. I'll start out with the first couple of items noted here, and then Ariane Colombo will cover item three, the refined employment and land demand analysis piece. Jessa will cover the bulk of the buildable lands inventory. I'll kind of finish that up and then talk about the refined comprehensive plan, goals, policies, and implementation measures piece. At each, after each of these sections, we're gonna pause and see if y'all have any questions or comments for us. I would say, you know, if there's questions for clarification, you know, please interrupt us, but we will pause after each of those kind of main topics and provide some time, so we could just kind of roll through each section and then, and then we'll plan to pause and see what you have to say. But if there's something that's not clear, you know, let us know, and we're happy to kind of stop along the way as well. All right, next one. So, you know, just what is an economic opportunities analysis? A lot of you have heard, I should feel similar to this previously, been part of previous processes. So it's really about what are the types of employment trends you're, you have seen and are expecting to see in the future? How much land is needed to support that future employment growth? How much land do you have on the ground to accommodate those future needs? Then how's that compare? How does the land supply compare to the land need? And then we're also updating the comprehensive plan to make sure you've got a, a current set of goals, policies, and implementation strategies to address the needs that have been identified in those other elements of the economic opportunities analysis. So that's just kind of a quick overview of the key components of that. Next one. So, and that's what we've been working on. These are kind of the steps we've been going through, and we've done this in sort of an iterative fashion. But what we've also done after those first two steps that are shown here is to do that comparison of land need and land supply. I will say that staff Josh and Jake were, did a lot of the work on recommending an updated set of draft comprehensive plan, goals, policies, and actions, and then we've drafted a set of narrative that summarizes what's come out of the other parts of the EOA that would also go into your comprehensive plan, so that you've got kind of, you're painting a picture of the economic landscape, and then you've got a set of goals, policies, and actions to complete that. And then next step would be to go through an adoption process with y'all with the planning commission and then the council. Before we get to that point, there are gonna be some changes that we know we're gonna make based on the comments that we heard from the advisory committee and then based on what we hear from y'all tonight. So we've got draft materials that we're presenting. We'll talk about some of the changes that have already been recommended, and then, you know, we'd like to hear from you if, you know, there are other changes or additions or things of that nature that you want to see incorporated before this goes to the, into the adoption process. So just generally, and Josh has talked about some of this already, but we do, you know, we are endeavoring to provide an updated set of data and findings and recommendations. As Josh has said, a lot has changed. Certainly, a lot's changed since the last EOA was adopted, but even in the last couple of years, since the earlier review, a lot has changed in terms of projected future conditions, in terms of, you know, land available on the ground, et cetera. And there's a number of reasons really for any city to update an economic opportunities analysis. One is just to inform future decision-making, kind of all of those elements do that, and particularly, I think the goals, policies, and implementation measures do that. They will help you in terms of pursuing grant applications or opportunities. They also end up being the foundation for shorter-term economic development strategies and work plans. And then also when you're reviewing land use decisions, and particularly in looking at, are those things consistent with the comprehensive plan, goals, and policies? They help towards that end. So just kind of having an updated set of data and goals and policies and action items is gonna help you kind of in, in all those ways. So. Next one. So I'm not gonna say too much about this because I think Josh pretty much covered it, so I don't think I need to say too much more about it. Other, and I will also note that kind of as we walk through the next couple pieces of the presentation, we'll talk more about how we've updated the information from the earlier EOA and kind of what the sources of information were, et cetera. So we'll talk about that in more detail, so I won't say much more about this slide. So I will take sort of the first pause in the presentation and just see if y'all have any questions about the process we've been going through or kind of the objectives of the process before we get into the details of the, the data and the information.
Any questions for Matt? I have one.
Yeah.
Could you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
Okay, the second bullet, or wait, be one, two, three, the fourth bullet point down, and this is kind of a follow-up to what Rod had asked. The city council did not adopt the analysis or proposed comprehensive plan updates. The reason we, this was in 2022, correct?
Correct.
And the reason we did not was because that Google, there was a disagreement over whether account the Google property is developable or vacant or whatever it was. Is that?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fair. I mean, it wasn't just that site, but that was a big part of it. I think just generally concerns about whether or not we should be considering certain sites in the inventory as developable, as buildable, and, you know, we were using the state rules and regulations as the basis for our recommendations, but there was, there was a fair bit of concern about that on the council and generally, so that I think was the main, the main reason.
Okay, so what are the, are there any repercussions from DLCD or anybody else about not adopting a plan within a certain period of time?
So I guess a couple of things. One, we've gone back in terms of what was presented then, we've pretty significantly revised what was prepared back in 2021, 2022. So you're not really at this point, wouldn't be adopting what we prepared back then. We've updated all of the employment projection information. We've taken a significant look at the buildable lands inventory and adjusted it quite a bit. We've got a new set of comprehensive plan narrative that encompasses the updated work, and we've got a new set of comp plan goals and policies. So I don't, if you're sort of thinking about, well, you know, we didn't update that before, and now we're coming back and, or didn't adopt that, that body of work before, and now we're coming back this much time later. I don't think that's an issue because we've done such significant work to update what was done previously.
So we didn't get, we didn't get any negative feedback from DLCD about not adopting it.
Oh, at the time.
Yeah.
I don't know. I, I didn't hear anything directly from them. And so, and I don't, I think you know, cities don't have, you, you don't, you're not required to update these documents during a certain time period.
Yeah, that's where I was getting at. It's good.
Yeah, there's not, there's not a certain time period where, oh, you haven't updated it since 2007, so state says you have to update it now. It's not so much that, it's more, do you have something useful to use, you know, for those purposes I mentioned a minute ago, you know, do you have a set of policies where they make sense in terms of reviewing current land, land use decisions, or in terms of, you know, coming up with a shorter-term economic development strategy plan or pursuing grants or things like that. And I think it's harder for you to do those things if you've got really outdated information in your comprehensive plan and in your EOA, and it's, it's probably more about that than the state saying, oh, you absolutely have to do this every certain number of years. They used to have those kind of requirements. They had what was called a periodic review program and work program, and cities were required to update things within a certain period, and that program is really not in place. And I don't believe, I don't remember if you got state funding for that previous EOA. That's kind of the time when they tend to get, I will say, they tend to be unhappy if you use their money and then you don't adopt the, the products of it. And that's as much as kind of I know about what happened then. I was involved then, but I didn't, I didn't hear more from DLCD than that. So.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Matt before we move on?
I can expand just slightly on it. So the EOA, that the timeline for adoption or the requirements to adopt an EOA, much different than an HNA. HNA, Housing Needs Analysis, is required to be updated per state law. So there's a little bit of a difference between the two of those.
Clarification. Okay.
All right. So I think we'll bump ahead a couple of slides, and I will turn it over to Ariane to cover this next piece.
Thank you, Matt. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. So I worked on the update to the employment data, the forecast and the land needs. And to go through this process, we did update all of the demographic and economic information for the DOWs, which I believe was in the detailed report in your packet. And here are just a few updates or an overview of those updates. Since around 2000, which was the last time this data was looked at, the regional economy has diversified significantly, meaning there are more firms doing different things than there were back in 2000. I will also add that the DOWs typically grows at a fairly decent clip, say over 1%, unless you were being confronted with economic crises, which happened, of course, in 2008, 09, and then again in 2020. Employment growth has recovered in the DOWs since 2020. The growth rate since 2020 has been 1.2%, which was the employment growth rate before 2020 in the DOWs. And then the Oregon Employment Department does forecasting for the McKed region. And that forecast from, I believe it was done in 2023 through 2033. The OED expects that the region will grow at about 0.9% in terms of employment. They also do an occupational forecast, and that forecast expects about 550 new jobs in the, in the DOWs, sorry, and different occupations, particularly in service. That's the last bullet point on, on this slide. And then wage growth has, has grown about 4.1% in the last 10 years. Most of that was since 2020, and that's not surprising given what we've seen in wages, wage growth since 2020. And then also median age has been getting younger in the DOWs, which was not the case in the data that we looked at back in 2021. I guess it was 2019, we were looking at that data, and the DOWs has since gotten younger, and it looks to be on that trajectory, which is a positive outlook for employment growth in the DOWs moving forward. And if you can see the detail here, this is just showing an industry sector employment growth over the last five years. And the green is the McKed region, and as you can see in many sectors, it was significantly hit hard by the pandemic, mainly in natural resources and mining, manufacturing, financial activities, other services, retail as well, although retail has recovered somewhat, so it's showing some positive growth now. And then, of course, information, education, health services, mainly health services in that category, and government have all grown during that time period. And then over on the right are, oh, sorry, Jessa, over on the right are the sectors that have maintained growth before, during, and after the pandemic. So these are subsectors of the, the larger employment sectors on the left. So crop production is within natural resources, construction, obviously within construction, and then you have manufacturing, and these are the sectors that maintained growth within these, the larger categories. And I went through that fairly quickly. I just want to pause real quick and ask if there are any questions about the information I just went over.
Rod.
Rod from City Council. I went through several pages. I couldn't find what TWU stood for.
Oh, yes. Sorry about that. That is transportation, warehousing, and utilities.
Mr. Mayor.
Ben.
A couple of questions. I can't quite make out the 114 that's in the middle of the chart. Does that align with the information?
Yes.
Like IT services or something?
That's right. Yes.
Okay. And then on the previous slide, I'm curious what, how do, how do we define a service occupation on the previous slide?
So service occupations are typically in retail. Most of the medical professions fall into service. Professional and business services, other services, pretty much anything that is not manufacturing or natural resources, nothing productive. So construction, manufacturing, all of that is, is considered productive, and then you know, pretty much everything else is service.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just comment in too, if anybody's like wanting to look at that graph a little bit closer, it is on page five of the packet. It's figure six in attachment two, so just in the event, because I'm having a difficult time seeing the colors myself. So if you want to look, take a closer look at it, it's on page five, or page, excuse me, page 10 of your packet.
Okay, Jessa, we can move to the next slide. So these two graphs, again, apologies, probably hard to see, but they outline the 20-year employment forecast and 20-year land demand. And typically in this process, you would do three different alternative employment growth scenarios, and I'll briefly explain the three that we did for, for this process. The first one is based on the OED forecast that I mentioned earlier that goes through 2033. And in the DOWs, the growth rate presumed is about 0.7%. And so this, the scenario one employment forecast is based on the OED forecast. The second one is The second one is based on both population growth in the DOWs and employment growth in the DOWs. And so looking to maintain a ratio between population and basically your labor force. And what we assume in scenario two is that population growth in the DOWs will continue at, at about where it is, perhaps a little bit lower, but generally maintain positive growth. And secondly, we assume that the labor force in the DOWs will improve relative to population. So the ratio will become larger over time. And we're assuming that because employment growth has been growing faster than population growth and also your median age is on a downward trajectory. So you have more people working age in the DOWs. And so that's the second scenario. The third one is assuming that certain industries will grow faster than they have and that we're calling that a target industries. And the target industries that we've targeted in this scenario are the productive industries in the DOWs. So manufacturing, natural resources, construction. And then secondly, we're assuming that the, the industries that support those productive industries will also see some growth. So we're looking there at wholesale trade, even some retail trade. And then some of the other service sectors, certainly business and professional services. And as you can see, there's some divergence over time between those three scenarios with, on the graph, the light blue line that's a little bit lower than the others, that's the OED forecast. And then the dark blue at the top is the target industry forecast. And there's about a, sorry, I'm having a hard time seeing the numbers too, fourteen hundred person difference and employment difference between scenario one and scenario two. Any questions about the employment forecast?
I have one.
Go ahead. No, you go. I'll go.
On that previous slide, when it said five hundred and fifty jobs through twenty thirty-three, was that five hundred and fifty jobs per year or five hundred and fifty jobs for this next eight-year time period?
Yeah, that was referring to the Oregon Employment Department's occupation forecast. And they were assuming five hundred and fifty new service jobs in the DOWs over a ten-year period.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the page before the, the graph, which is page thirteen of this packet, about midway down, it talks about weaknesses and threats. And it says, the most significant challenge for the DOWs is the lack of housing and land available for housing and employment growth. And then it goes on to say that this will require significant efforts by stakeholders to maximize infill development and work with regulators to expand development options. Who, who are regulators?
I think we're assuming DLCD primarily, and then any other agencies that are regulating land supply essentially.
Like the Gorge Commission?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just wondering if that's a significant amount of factor that we should mention their names.
Perhaps so, yes. We can make note of that.
Any other questions?
Okay, so the table on the right is the employment forecast translated into land demand. And that process happens by taking industry standard, industry standards for each of the different zones, industrial, office, retail and government, and assuming a certain square footage per employee. And then taking that in a square foot per employee and total square foot and converting that into gross acres based again on some industry standards. And so for the three scenarios, you can see the potential land demand under, under each of them. And I'll just note in the target industry scenario three, we're assuming a significantly greater need for industrial land because we're targeting productive industries in the DOWs. Any questions about the land demand here? And this is aggregate demand and then broken down into different zones.
And this is also on page twenty-three of the combined packet. If you want to look at the numbers, the numbers are even small in the packet, so. Might be easier to read though.
Feel free to chime in if you have questions as I move on. And another way to look at land demand is to consider site type. And this is important because we don't know over a twenty-year period, what type of employers may want to expand in the DOWs or, or may show up looking for lands to cite. And so we considered in, in this table, we considered the type of development patterns in the DOWs. So by zoning, what types of firms are situated and what types of sites are they, are they using? And so we came up with some averages in each of the categories and we took that, that employment growth and converted it into potential sites. And so if you look at scenario three in this table, most of the, the sites that will be needed are, are small firms and that's to be expected, about seventy percent of firms in the DOWs are small employers. So firms employing less than ten people. And then me, a small, medium employers, which employ ten to nineteen, they take up, I'm sorry, I forget the percentage. It will become obvious here in a second. But they take up a certain percentage of, of sites. And then your, your medium firms require about fourteen percent of sites. And then your large employers are using about one percent of sites. However, your, your large and medium sites, or I'm sorry, your large and medium employers are responsible for about sixty-five percent of your employment. It's very, pretty important. And so building in some flexibility to your land supply will be pretty important. And looking at potential sites is a good way to ensure that while we're looking at aggregate demand, we also understand the type of sites that might be needed in the future by different firms who we don't know what, who they are right now. But it, it builds in some flexibility. So any, any questions about this table? And also, Matt, did I miss anything important here?
No, I don't think so. I, I would just kind of echo what you just said is we don't know exactly what size site some of these firms are going to need. Particularly given sort of the range of target industry, potential target industries we've identified. And that's why some of these ranges are pretty big. And so you'll see in kind of subsequent slides that we pick some averages. And those are kind of our best estimate of averages. And it's pretty hard to be more precise than that with, you know, the information we have. So I just kind of want to note that and note that these are two different ways to look at land need. And I would say that the, kind of the aggregate demand or land need is the more traditional way to do this in an economic opportunities analysis. It's the, so almost every EOA I've worked on or been a party to was use that, that method. But the site needs analysis is another, you know, legitimate way to look at it. But it's, I will say, less precise. And it's harder to sort of say, oh yeah, that, that we're going to need exactly this many sites at exactly this size. Both because of the breadth of different types of firms and site needs in each of the, these categories. And because twenty years into the future, like Ariane said before, like it's pretty hard to know. So we're doing our best to kind of predict this at the level we can with the information we have. So mostly just trying to kind of emphasize what Ariane said, but that's what I would add.
Yeah. And I would just add one more thing regarding the transition between your medium, small, medium, and then your medium and large. Many, especially medium and large firms need, want to have extra land available for expansion. And, and I would say that that might even be the case for your small, medium firms. Certainly they want opportunities available for expansion. So I, I think that's it for this slide.
A question.
Uh, Councilor Ring.
Thanks. This figure, figure twenty-four in the packet. My, my takeaway, I want to make sure that my thinking is correct here. My takeaway from this is that it, it could help inform strategies that we can use to take care of the configuration of our buildable lands. In other words, we, there's, I think there's an identified, we'll, we'll probably get to it eventually, not to get ahead of ourselves, but sort of an aggregate versus configuration problem, right? So do we have large enough lots for small and medium-sized businesses to actually build on and develop? And my takeaway is that this kind of gives us a projection of like where we need to focus our strategy to maybe incent, how do we incentivize people to address the configuration of our lots, our buildable lots in the city so that we can, we can help them realize growth. Right? Like especially as a small business becomes a medium-sized business and it goes from, you know, two or three acres to eight up, right? How do we, it's kind of the takeaway from this slide. Is that, I don't know, kind of a good way to, to look at it or step back from it?
Yeah. Well, I, I would defer to perhaps Josh on this, but yes, I think that that's a good way to look at it for sure.
Yeah. And I think to that point, it's actually something that we, that we talk about, you know, the, the overall efficiency of the land that we have, the configuration of the land. This is, you know, this, a lot of the, the figures and statistics in here provide us with, you know, what's here, the, you know, the land that's currently available and really when it comes down to, I think we'll probably get into this conversation at some point about an urban growth boundary expansion, because a lot of this EOA centers around a UGB expansion. And one of the things that the state actually looks at when you consider a UGB expansion is how efficient the land is being used and configured within the city itself. So it is really important to look at and we'll get in as we, we dig in further to the BLI and you kind of spoiler alert, you provided, you know, kind of a sneak peek of what we're going to discuss a little bit more. But yeah, it's all about the efficiency and how to reconfigure the lots. And if we need X amount of acres, but we don't have those lots to reconfigure to get that X amount of acre, acreage. That is, that can be, that can show inefficiency of land use, or if we can't actually clearly document that we're, you know, the ability to reconfigure the land to get to those numbers. And I think there's more of an argument for a UGB expansion type of conversation.
We're going to talk about that a little bit later though.
We will talk about it.
I assume we will, yeah.
We'll talk about it a little bit on the next slide and we'll talk about it more when we talk about the comparison of land and supply, which will be kind of at the tail end of the review of the buildable lands inventory numbers.
And then the, this slide here is just noting some of the recommended updates and changes that have been requested throughout the project that we've either done or will do. And we'll be adding some additional narrative explaining some of our calculations. And then further kind of what we were just talking about, the, the difference between the aggregate land need and the site need configurations. And then lastly, we'll be writing a summary table with an estimate for the acreage needed to accommodate demand for the different site needs. And we've listed the average site sizes, and this is based on current development in the DOWs. And I'll just add that there's quite a large range of sizes for different firms, even on different sites. So these, these really are an average, I think, ballpark and, and quite a large range actually. So. And if there are no more questions on this section, I will pass it back to Matt.
Yeah. And I'll just jump in really quick. So on it, I kind of glazed over it, but in the memorandum provided by staff, you know, it touches on the different, you know, attachments, one through four, and to Ariane's point, it's, you know, this first attachment, one is a memo that MIG has prepared. And it was, as you'll see, it's the most recent, it's the one from August. So this information has been shared with our advisory committee, at least attachments two through four. Attachment one, we provided here to show you that these are, we're addressing comments from those advisory committee meetings. As we talked about earlier, this is, this is the draft. This is, we anticipate changes from this conversation as well as our previous conversation. After the information was provided, attachments two through four with our advisory committee, we didn't go back and change the information. It is the same information being presented to you from those advisory committee meetings. So that memo to get more into what Ariane was just showing with that slide of attachment one discusses some of those other items that will be addressed with the changes in, in future revisions.
Yeah. And we'll talk about that in kind of each section of the, of the presentation. We'll describe the changes that we'll be making, that we know we'll be making. And then, you know, hear from you about anything else that you think needs to be adjusted. So.
Maybe it's not even germane, but we're, we're just talking about buildable, every, it's buildable land only.
Yeah, we are just about to talk about it. Yeah, we're about to go through that.
But down, in our downtown, we already have things built that are empty. A lot of them. Does that subtract or add to those totals somehow? Calculated in any way that we have empty.
Vacancies not, vacancies not factored into this. Vacancy of a building is not factored into this. So this is more, this is focused on, on the bare land itself, taking a look at the bare land itself and what's developed or not. But it is a great point. And it's a great point of, you know, the efficiency of use.
Maybe you can come up with a plan to help whatever's going on with those owners to do some kind of a, I don't know, something to draw people to downtown. That's been done in other communities where they give them tax breaks. You have things that are there already. They're not being used.
Yeah, yeah.
All we seem to be doing, looking, doing is looking forward to building more stuff on land we don't have.
Yeah. One thing I can mention, I mean, to your point that it may be considered controversial, but I'll bring it up. Other cities do use it. There are things called like dark windows ordinances. And these are ordinances that some cities place on vacant storefronts. And the goal there is to, there can be penalty, penalties attached to them, but it's effectively ensuring that the landowners that are in those vacant buildings are trying to encourage tenants from, to come in or selling those spaces altogether so that you're not, you don't have vacant downtowns with, you know, areas, at least providing window coverings if you have vacant spaces. But hopefully that kind of touches on some of the, some of your comment there.
And I would just add, when, when we get into talking about kind of goals and policies and strategies, that's, I think, a really good one to sort of take a look at. Have we included some strategies around that in that part of the proposed set of comprehensive plan amendments? And I will give it a quick skim while Jess is talking during the next section, just to see if I see that. But I think that, that's a really good thing to, to bring up in terms of thinking about a strategy around that. So I'll just note that. All right. If you're good to go, we will move forward and kind of cover the, the supply side. We've talked about the demand side, side, and then we'll talk about the supply side.
Great. Thanks, Matt. And hi, everyone. My name is Jessa. I'm with MIG and I've been working on the BLI portion of this project. So I'm going to spend just the next few minutes walking us through the refined employment buildable land inventory or the BLI, which as Matt mentioned, looks at the supply of employment lands in the DOWs and then how this compares to the, the employment demand that Ariane just summarized for us. And I will note that I'm going to just throw a lot of information, give an overview of the process, methodology, our maps and key findings. And then Matt will do a bit of a discussion around the. And then um, Matt will do a bit of a discussion around the comparison between the supply and demand. And then we'll open it up for questions, so, um, because some of your questions that may come up may be answered as we keep discussing. So um, I'll just go ahead and dive right in. So um, this process refines the uh, twenty twenty economic opportunity analysis B L I, which we mentioned earlier, um, to reflect new conditions such as recent development that has occurred over the past few years, tax lot changes. Um, there were quite a few different new tax lots in the city since that prior B L I was conducted, so aligning those. And then new constraints data, such as the city's new fifty foot stream corridor buffers, and then also updated FEMA floodplain data. Um, and the B L I was composed of four main steps, which are summarized in the B L I memo that was included in today's meeting packet, but I'll go over each of those today in a little bit more detail. But broadly, those include determining land type, which was our first step. So employment versus residential with versus other. We are purely focused on employment lands within this analysis. Um, identifying and calculating constraints, so steep slopes, floodplain, wetlands, stream corridors, easements, et cetera, just to make sure that those are not being included within the developable land calculations. Then classifying land by development status, so whether sites are developed, committed, partially vacant or vacant, to help us determine that supply of employment land. And then in the, inventorying results, um, calculating that acreage, so we can comply, uh, compare that to the demand net acreage that Ariane just went over. And then lastly, comparing that land need and supply. Um, so before we dive into the analysis, I did want to provide some key definitions, particularly rating, relating to the different development status classifications that we'll be using within um, our discussion and that are included within, in the memo. Um, the first is developed, so developed sites include sites with um, improvements in little to no additional capacity. And then vacant, which is um, sites with minimal to no physical improvements. Partially vacant sites are those with some improvements, although they do have room still in capacity for additional development. Um, then we have committed sites, um, which are either vacant or partially vacant sites. But these sites are committed to non-employment uses, or they cannot be developed within the planning horizon. So they, although they may be vacant or partially vacant, they are not going to be incorporated into that final um, net developable acreage for various reasons. And then lastly, we have constrained sites, which are sites that are completely constrained by specific features or hazards and have zero unconstrained acreage. So although they may be technically vacant or partially vacant due to those constraints, for example, maybe it's completely underwater, therefore it is completely constrained and won't be incorporated into those final developable land calculations. Um, so just to quickly go over our methodology, and I already kind of walked through this at a very high level for the B L I. And we first start with all land in the U G B, and then we remove land that is zoned for residential, other um, non-employment uses to get down to just those employment lands. And then from that, we remove the developed or committed land for public facilities or of, other development purposes or uses. And then from that, we are left with vacant infill or redevelopable land, which from that, we then remove the um, various development constraints that I mentioned, so wetlands, floodplains, slopes, um, which will bring us down to unconstrained land, which from there, we then remove streets and infrastructure and existing development assumptions, which brings us down to that net, the net buildable acres, um, which are used to form the basis for this B L I and are available for development in the coming years. And before we jump into um, the maps and as well as the summary table summarizing the results from this analysis, we did want to acknowledge that from both the prior twenty nineteen B L I and throughout this process, there have been numerous adjustments made to the buildable land inventory, and particularly the sites that are included within that. Um, adjustments include removing some port-owned sites, the Lockheed Martin Superfund sites, sites impacted by B P A easements, um, committed sites, so sites like the Community College and Medical Center sites, um, a few other sites that are committed to uses already. Um, we also adjusted the um, employment capacity of Google-owned sites, acknowledging that they have a different employment density and therefore have different um, impacts on available employment lands. And then also, as I mentioned earlier, we um, removed sites that have been developed since the prior B L I, which there were quite a few sites, particularly Google-owned sites that have been developed since the last B L I. And then also, um, thanks to involvement of city staff and PAC members, there have been a uh, multiple iterations of targeted adjustments based on existing conditions and feedback. So city staff or PAC members have let us know that maybe a certain site is coming up from our G I S data as being vacant or um, partially vacant, but in reality, it really is not. Um, so, and I see our numbers didn't get in there, but we have, there were numerous sites, at least over thirty, that we adjusted based off of um, staff and PAC member feedback. And then we also made adjustments to um, eliminate buildable acreages on sites where they may be technically vacant or partially vacant, but the land that is available is so small, it may be just a small sliver that it really isn't available for future development. So we've made some adjustments to reflect that. And then lastly, um, removing sites that have zero unconstrained acres due to those development constraints I went over a minute ago. So now we get to look at some maps, um, it's always hel- helpful to have more of a visual component. I'll walk us through all the maps that we conducted and completed for this process. So this first map shows um, zoning in the DOWS and provided the basis for how we determined employment, residential and other um, lands within the DOWS. And informed this second map, which shows um, employment lands in blue. Yellow shows residential lands and then light gray are other land uses in the city. And for this analysis, we purely were looking at those blue employment lands. So you can see, majority of those are along the Columbia River and the I eighty-four corridor. This next map then shows the different constraints that are present within the DOWS. So the purple are showing the fifty-foot stream corridor buffers, so um, that the city has put in place to ensure development is not happening within those corridors. The blue are wetlands, the orange is areas with steep slopes. The bright blue are B P A right-of-way's, and then the kind of turquoise are FEMA flood hazard areas. And these were what we used to create a compiled constraints layer to then remove um, that constrained land from the overall developable land calculations. And then this last map is probably um, the most important and interesting for us in this analysis. It shows the different development status classifications that we have applied to all of the employment lands within the DOWS. Um, so the pink sites show committed sites, so those sites that are committed to other uses or um, are not available for development within the planning horizon. The orange sites are those developed sites, so sites that there is not future capacity for development. The yellow sites are partially vacant, green sites are completely vacant. And then those blue sites are sites that are completely constrained by um, a development constraint such as water or steep slopes, et cetera. So the next few slides include a series of tables that summarize the results of the B L I. We just have a few more of these before we'll um, pause for questions, um, because I know we're sharing a lot of information. But um, this slide shows the gross and net developable acres of employment land within the DOWS, broken down by employment zone. And I won't go into each of the zones, but um, these are included in your packets as well, if you want to look at these a little bit more closely. Um, but this shows that there is an estimated two hundred and fifty-four gross acres of vacant or partially vacant employment land in the DOWS. And this gross acreage accounts for a reduction in eight acres of available li- land on sites owned by Google, based on their lower assumed employment densities. Um, we then calculated net acreage from this. And as a result, there is an estimated two hundred and two acres available for employment land after accounting for things such as existing development on partially vacant sites. And then um, setting aside for infrastructure and setbacks on completely vacant sites. So um, the high takeaway from this is there are two hundred and two acres available for employment land based on our B L I findings. So taking this even a step further, um, this uh, slide, um, we also, as Ariane mentioned, we're looking at different site sizes and how aggregate, aggregate land need may compare to um, land need for different size categories and configurations. And um, to meet typical industrial employment needs of target industries in the DOWS. Um, so as Ariane presented on earlier, there is a need for a combination of small sites from zero to two acres, small medium sites from two to eight acres, medium sites, which are from eight to sixty acres, and then large sites, which are over sixty acres to accom- accommodate future employment based on average firm size. Um, this table then summarizes the number of vacant or partially vacant sites currently identified in the B L I, so existing sites within the site size categories in the industrial zone. So as shown, the city has um, buildable sites available in those first three categories, but does not have an available site in that sixty to one hundred category. Um, so just to summarize a little further, so there are thirty-two based on the B L I, zero to two acre sites, five two-to-eight acre sites, then an additional five eight-to-sixty acre sites. Um, but this is much lower than what was projected as uh, demand for those different site size categories. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Matt, who's going to go into this um, analysis a little bit further and what it means for overall um, land demand and supply in the DOWS.
All right, thanks, Jessa. Um, and yeah, I'm just going to cover three more slides, and then we'll pause for questions. I think kind of the key takeaway, and you'll see this on the next slide, um, in sort of tabular form. Um, but really, the key takeaway is we're showing that based on that aggregate um, uh, land demand um, calculation compared to the number of net acres of buildable land that we identified in the inventory. If you just look at that, there, you see, it looks like you've got an adequate supply of land. But what you're seeing, or we're seeing from the site needs analysis, is you don't have an adequate number of sites in each of these size categories to meet the future demand that we're seeing. So again, these are kind of two different ways to sort of think about that equation. Um, and so that site needs analysis is saying that you don't have enough um, properties in the inventory in the size ranges that are needed to support the future land needs. And I think another thing to just note, um, is that particularly for large sites, um, that does have an impact on your ability to, you know, attract or recruit um, those kind of companies or, or firms that need larger sites. And that is something that we heard from members of the um, project advisory committee during this process. So that's kind of one of our key, key takeaways. We'll kind of see some of that in tabular form in the next one. So I want to sort of, again, be careful to say that this, these are, these numbers are based on averages. They're based on, you know, on our understanding of sort of the current configuration of sites. Um, but this is showing potentially a pretty significant um, deficit of land to meet those future site needs if we just apply those average um, site sizes from those different site range categories. So there is a big difference between sort of that um, estimated uh, land demand based on the aggregate calculation versus the site needs calculation. Um, but I do want to sort of caveat, the site needs calculation is, it's frankly, a little less dependable in terms of coming up with a specific number. But um, we wanted to come up with a specific number, that was one of the requests of the project advisory committee and staff. And so, you know, we've got that here in the report. And, and I think either way, kind of the takeaway is, we don't see enough sites in those different ranges to meet the demand that we're expecting. So um, next one, and then we'll take a pause after this next one. So just in terms of updating the memos that were in your packet, um, we um, we got some kind of, I'll say, late-breaking comments from PAC members about specific sites. We had made quite a few changes already to the inventory in terms of changing the status or eliminating sites or reducing acreages. But there's a few that were mentioned in uh, comments from PAC members that came in without enough time for us to make those changes. So there's a few sites we still need to um, adjust and then recalculate our numbers, update that memo, the buildable lands inventory memo. So it's not what you got in your packet, still needs a little bit of updating. And then we also just want to, and Ariane mentioned this earlier, um, provide a little more narrative that describes that comparison um, of site demand and buildable land supply in terms of the um, the uh, sites in those different size ranges. And just include some of the things we've been saying verbally about, you know, how do we come up with that? What are the caveats? What are the limitations, et cetera? So there's some more narrative that we will be adding to um, our reports and to the kind of condensed narrative that would go into the comp plan, um, the comp plan amendments. And I'll talk about that again in a little bit. So I will pause um, and just see if y'all have any questions or comments about any of that before we move on and talk about the comp plan amendments.
Questions? I have a couple. Um, the map on page eleven of the there you go. Um, the pink areas are defined as being committed. Could you repeat the definition of a committed site? There, I know you had it up there, there it is.
Yeah, so committed sites are, so they're either vacant or partially vacant. Um, in some cases, they may, um, that have been reserved for a, or committed to non-employment uses, or they cannot be developed for employment use during that planning period. So um, some of these sites, like an example would be, um, let me think here, what a good example. So the Community College and Medical Center sites, we identified as committed as these sites are already committed to another use. Um, same for maybe a site that is a parking lot or maybe a storage facility for an adjacent use. So that site was identified as committed. Um, Matt, I don't know if you have any others you would want to throw out there?
Yeah, there are um, at least one or two sites that are um, that are committed for use for infrastructure, you know, wastewater treatment, et cetera. Um, and then also, um, there are some things that we identified as committed because they are essentially like um, Superfund sites or things of that nature. Um, and so within the state rules that guide these processes, they allow us to take some of those types of sites out of the mix. Um, and even though they might be vacant or partially vacant, we identified them as committed. If they really be due to that condition, which is again, you know, specifically cited in the state rules, we can take them out, we classified them as committed. So those are a few different types of examples, and there might be others, but that covers quite a few of them.
Yeah, you mentioned the two, you mentioned the two sites that uh, I was asking about, which were the hospital and the um, the um, the, the Community College.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it's hard, it's hard for me to understand the difference between a committed site and a, and a um, developed site.
Well, I think the reason for the uh, the difference mainly is developed is sort of fully developed. Um, committed, there is some acreage there that's not developed, but it's committed to this um, this other future use. That's, there could be some employment, I guess, in the future, but we're assuming it's committed to this institutional use and, and not kind of available to sell or accommodate other types of employment uses.
Okay.
So that's, that's how we define them.
On the next page, uh, table four, the bottom line number there, two hundred and two point, two hundred and one point six. Is, is that, that's the number that was the source of so much debate, shall we say, a couple of years ago?
Well, it was a different number, a couple of years ago.
But that's, that was the number that caused a lot of concern, wouldn't?
Yes, it was a different number, it was a bigger number.
Yeah, what, what was the number? Do you remember?
Gosh, I, I can come up with it like before we're done, I think, but I, I want to say it was like, I has, I'm not going to say, because I don't want to get it wrong. Um, but I'll go back and take a quick look, one of us will, um, kind of talking about the other pieces of the presentation and, and let you know. But yes, that was, that was the number in, um, that caused a lot of concern. And um, particularly, um, if we had a row for Google sites, that acreage number was quite a bit higher. Um, so some of those sites have been developed. I will note um, that there was a little bit of actual net increase in that number due to the fact that FEMA floodplain maps have been updated in that time. And we have used the most recently updated um, FEMA maps. And so you actually now have a little bit of less floodplain area, so that sort of reduced the constraints and increased the buildable land. So there were some changes that went sort of the other direction in terms of the, um, that FEMA mapping. But in most cases, this this two hundred and two number was, I mean, the total was definitely higher previously. And, you know, across most of these cells or rows, you see a reduction.
Yeah, another reason we should appreciate FEMA so much.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, on page sixteen at the top, you talk about the very first bullet point, first sentence. This inventory documents the supply of land within the city that is buildable pursuant to Oregon statutes and administrative rules. So state statutes dictate the method by which we calculate that number. Is that?
That's, I mean, I think that's a fair statement. They do provide a certain amount of leeway. There are actually a couple, but yes, they also are fairly prescriptive in other ways. And so, you know, everything we've done, we're making sure that we're being consistent with the state rules. Because frankly, we don't want you to get appealed, you know, if you went to adopt this and or made some other decision based on this information, we don't, we don't want to see that happen. So yeah, they do dictate in a large part the types of things we can take out of an inventory, for instance, or call unbuiltable. And you know, there was that kind of funnel diagram that Jess showed earlier. There are some sites that are vacant, that are going to be costly to develop, but we can't take sites out of the inventory simply because they're costly development, costly to develop. And we can't take them, take them out of the long-term inventory because the property owner says, I'm not going to develop this in the next five years. So that's kind of where some of those rules come in. So yeah, short answer is yes, that is correct.
Okay, and the second bullet point. Because some of the cities larger vacant, partially vacant, redevelopable employment sites are owned by companies that have, that have acquired properties for development, but do not have immediate plans and do not plan to sell or lease these properties, that there is a lesser supply of properties that are more traditionally available, quote, end quote, for development in the short term. For example, three of the vacant medium sites are owned by Google. As a result, they are not anticipated to be available to other users, but are appropriately included in the city's twenty-year supply of buildable employment land. So my question is, if they're not available, quote unquote, how can they be considered buildable employment land? I mean, I just wonder if
Yeah.
if that should be rewarded.
Well, yeah. I mean, they, we can't just for the reasons I just mentioned, we can't take them out of the inventory. We could reward them to say rather than available, this buildable, because you're right, I mean, they're not currently available. They're considered by state rules to be buildable or again, available. That's the word that's used pretty typically in these kind of processes, available over the long term, over the next twenty years. But they are not available now. So yeah, we might want to update that wording. I think that would be appropriate to do. Even though we need to, by rule, keep them in the inventory. We can say that if you're looking at your, a need for a certain amount of property in the short term, that they, we can say, oh, in the next five years, they are not considered available. But state rules don't allow us to just completely deduct them from the inventory unless there's some kind of deed restriction or something like that. You know, on them. Or one of the other things that's embedded in the state rules that says we can pull them out. Yeah.
Having not attended plan commission meetings, I have a question. Does the plan commission know why I'm asking these types of questions? Well, the reason we had so much debate before was because the gorge commission is using the amount of land we have available for development as an excuse not to let us expand our urban growth boundary. So that's the reason that we had so much debate a couple of years ago about that acreage and why that two hundred and one is such an important number. And the gorge commission used that to the hilt and would make up all kinds of ridiculous statements that would prove, quote unquote, that the city didn't need to have our urban growth boundary expanded because we have all this land that can be developed. So that's why I'm kind of harping on this. So. Any other?
I think to the, to, no, no, it's fine. I think to the point, you know, on, aside from the, the UGB expansion, both Jake and I chatted with the planning director of Prineville this week. And Prineville went through a similar attempt at a UGB expansion, but they were coupling it, combining it with their EOA at the same time. And it got kind of messy. And their council decided to actually just withdraw the applications altogether. But with Prineville, if you're familiar, other data centers over there, Meta and Apple have data centers in Prineville. And they're buying up swaths of six hundred acres maybe. So if you go up on what they call their upper shelf, I think they call it Google, you know, it's a large industrial area, but two data centers own all of this land for future development. But it's basically that you could say in this grand scheme of things, you could say that that is developable land, but it's only going to be developed by those data centers. So it's kind of that, it's that other thing. It's just it's land that is developable, but it is not available. So I think the, I think the wording is, is important and we will definitely take a, you know, a deep dive into that.
Yeah, yeah, I think all good points.
I'm curious, how much would that, I mean, is there, could we come up with an estimate of how much it would actually change the, the total number of buildable lands?
Well, you can kind of see.
It would go down from two oh one, but how much?
Well, forty-five acres. I mean, that's kind of what you're seeing in this table under that gray Google Sites. And I will say that that's already been discounted based on, there's actually more acres than that, but we discounted it based on the employment density that's typical of Google's facilities. So, so we'd actually done that previously, but we, we maintain that discount. So it's kind of got lower capacity than some of the other properties in the area. But yeah, that would be the change. And again, the way the state thinks about this is that they're looking at what's the capacity for employment? And if a site has not been developed, then even if it's just employment by that company, it still represents capacity for future employment. And so that's why we can't just kind of take it out of the inventory. But I, I agree with the comments around kind of the terminology we use and how we describe this. And I think, you know, we talked about this definitely in that buildable lands inventory, the, about this issue in particular. So we've, we've really tried to kind of acknowledge and document it. And I think that's also part of the reason, you know, we took that site and out site needs analysis approach in terms of documenting that as well.
Okay, Carrie.
While we're kind of on the subject, there was definitely some language in there discussing how the gorge commission is viewing urban areas and taking the regional approach, looking at Dallesport as part of our community's essentially outlet for growth. And, and it noted that stakeholders felt like that was the appropriate approach from the gorge commission. And that has not been the sense that I got, have gotten from community conversations in the last few years as that process went through. And so I think it would be worth revisiting that language as well before this, these pieces move forward towards adoption. Because there's a lot, I, I guess, I, I feel like there are a lot of challenges with that approach. We don't have control over process in Dallesport, you know, it's a different county, a different state. The communities there aren't, it's not incorporated. So there's a significant difference in the kind of infrastructure that's available. When you're talking about employment land in particular, that gives me a lot of heartburn. And so I think it would be that I, I would hope that some of that nuance will be reflected in the document that comes forward as well.
Yeah, we're happy to take a look at that language. I do want to be clear that none of that land in Dallesport is included in the inventory. So we're not sort of saying, oh, this is part of the inventory. But I, yeah, happy to take a look at that language and work with staff and
I understand that it's not part of the inventory and won't be reflected in, in, you know, an Oregon UGB conversation. But given that larger context with the gorge commission, I think it'd be valuable to take a look at the language.
Okay, yeah, happy to do that.
Yeah, the gorge commission and the friends of the gorge were very they used to talk about all the potential in Dallasport and how that would benefit the Dalles and therefore reduce the reliance that we had on expanding our urban growth boundary when we had all this land in Dallasport, which I might point out, which I pointed out to them that the city would not get any benefit out of any development over there. Except maybe people crossing the bridge to shop, which doesn't really add to our property tax base. Okay, any other questions or comments?
And this is, this is a little bit for Matt. So we looked at this. You know, this is all just the number, the number crunching. And there's some, some big assumptions that go into it, and that is the averages for the square foot per employee. And if you look at for industry, I think it's six hundred square foot per employee. But then you can also look at this from target industries and you can delve into what we said is our target industries and use other numbers for, you know, we expect this much growth in this target industry, and that might not have a six hundred square foot per employee. It could have more like a forty thousand square foot per employee, which completely changes your expected numbers and necessary. And so that was part of the conversation that we had with Prineville about their way of looking at doing the the, the inventory. Because if you look at your Google Sites, you know, for the number of employees per acre, it's not six hundred per square foot. And so if they're a target industry and we identify that within the, the, the the document as target industries and we look through those individually, we can make some, some significant changes. It's going to take some time, but it's something that would be the direction of you guys, if that's something you want us to look at.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt.
I was just going to say thank you and, and we'll go ahead and move on to kind of the last part of our, or almost the last part. We've got like one slide on next steps, but kind of the last piece of this is to talk about updates or amendments to your comprehensive plan. And so there's kind of three things here. One is to incorporate narrative that summarizes the results of the, the EOA. So, you know, what are we talking about in terms of future employment projections, types of employment, types of land needs, et cetera? What's the buildable land supply look like? What's the comparison look like? So just summarizing that, not in as much detail as in those first couple memos, but we've started to do that in the third or the last memo, I guess memo four or attachment four. So we would essentially replace what's in your comp plan now because it's pretty outdated with that updated summary of this information. And then the second piece is updating the goals and policies in your comprehensive plan. And so there's a variety of new goals and policies. And I really want to give Jake and Josh a lot of credit for drafting a lot of that. We want to make sure that you've got policies that reflect what this EOA is saying. Make sure you've got policies that talk about designating the, an adequate number of employment sites in the right zoning categories, policies that get at providing public facilities and transportation facilities. So those are just kind of a few things that we've got. And then your comprehensive plan for each chapter includes goals, policies, and also implementation measures. And so the measures are intended to implement those adopted policies. We haven't, and as part of this process, aren't proposing to update your plan and zoning map, but we are proposing text amendments to the comprehensive plan to reflect all the things I just noted above. And I'll say just a little bit more about the updates to the goals and policies and also a few additional changes that have been noted, you know, through the last PAC meeting that we had. So next one. So again, I'm, I always jump ahead and say some things before I get to the slide. I feel like it happens every time I do this. So again, in terms of the changes to the narrative, it's really about kind of updating what we've done, updating the narrative to reflect this work that we've done. And also adopting the economic opportunities analysis as a supporting document to your comprehensive plan. So that's kind of what that first bullet and those subbullets are about. And then really pretty significant updates to the, to the goals and policies. They've really been reorganized so that they follow a certain organization where you've got a goal and policies underneath that. And then under the policies, you've got implementation measures. So. So we've got now seven goals and then a set of policies and implementation measures under those. I'm not going to, I'm going to talk about, I think, like an example or two, but not get too deep into this. But it's all in your packet. So seven goals, expand and diversify the economic base, grow and attract a skilled workforce, strengthen and activate downtown and community destinations. That might be where we have some more specific policies around sort of filling some of those vacant spaces and finding ways to help do that. Goal four, ensuring economic development readiness and resilience. Goal five, growing the green economy and technology innovation sector. Six, strengthening regional economic integration and infrastructure. And the point there is not that like you're telling your regional partners what to do, but you're making sure that you've got policies around partnering and coordinating with them. So that's important. And then goal seven is really kind of new to this, would be new to your economic development policies, but supporting cultural, creative and experiential economy. So just kind of a couple of quick examples. So under goal one, expand and diversify the economic base. We've got a policy that says protect and plan for a long-term industrial supply. And then a number of ways to implement that policy. So preserving key industrial areas such as port of the Dallaslands, creating policies to avoid conversion of industrial land and non-industrial uses, identifying a way to replace industrial lands that are developed or redeveloped and increasing the supply of industrial sites to attract some of those target industry businesses. So that's just an example under that goal. And I think I've got one more. Goal four, ensure economic development readiness and resilience. We've got a number of policies here. So one, policy four point one is make it easier to develop in the Dalles. So you can do that by streamlining permitting processes, providing pre-development assistance for certain sites that you think of as sort of catalytic sites are going to spur additional growth or development. And regularly update the city's website, you know, where you've got information about resources at the city. And then plan for a long-term resilience and adaptability is another policy in there. And we've got a number of potential measures to implement that. Addressing hazard mitigation and redundancy with utilities and infrastructure and land use planning, encouraging redevelopment that incorporate, you know, efficiently laying out infrastructure, monitoring and reporting progress using economic metrics. So those are ways to implement that one. I think, and as I said, there were a number of comments. I will say not a ton, but a number of good, really good comments in terms of updating both the narrative. I mean, actually, there were quite a few comments on that one, updating the narrative related to summarizing the results of the land needs analysis and the BLI. So we've got a number of changes and we talked about those really earlier in the presentation, the types of changes we'd make to that narrative. And then there were some suggested changes to some of the policies, particularly policies one dash one, which is to sort of recognize that healthcare is an important sector of your economy. We hadn't really previously mentioned that or talked about it in these policies. So adding that and also just, you know, talking a little bit more about target industries and make sure you're promoting growth in those sectors of the economy. So those were, that's one change there. Next one, again, thinking about healthcare, but also education, recreation, other things that kind of attract new employers and also help you retain existing employers, adding some language around those things. Continuing efforts to relocate the hospital and exploring urban renewal investment in the riverfront amenities. So those were some additional things that PAC members suggested. And then kind of the last one was adding an implementation measure to policy four dash two to foster partnerships, to encourage community gardens, to expand locally sourced food supplies. So those were things we heard from the PAC already about updating the document that we sent you, you know, in advance of the meeting to expand on some of those policies and implementation measures. So I'll stop there to see if you have any questions about that piece of it, the comprehensive plan narrative and goals policies. And, and I'll just briefly say I think there are a number of policies and implementation measures And, and I'll just briefly say, I think there are a number of policies and implementation measures that kind of indirectly get out the comment earlier about, um, attracting people into those vacant spaces in existing buildings downtown, for instance. Uh, so I did kind of peruse, um, the document. I think there's a few things I get at that, but I think we could potentially say that a little more explicitly. So I think that's one thing for sure. We can kind of go back and take a look at and see if we might have some things to add related to that. So now I will actually stop and see if you have any comments on this last bit.
Any questions or comments from the last chapter?
I can expand just slightly. Um, I want to give Jake Anderson the credit or the blame, if you don't like it, of, of the restructuring of the comprehensive plan. I think it's a really, um, productive way to do it, like, like Matt showed, it's goals, policies and implementation members, uh, uh, measures, excuse me. If you currently look at our comprehensive plan and the way it's structured, you'll look into every chapter and we have goals, implementation measures and policies. And there's really some kind of disorganization with them. And that's just really how the comprehensive plan has been for years. So I think doing it this way is really, I, I think it really hits it on the head to show us how we're going to be achieving these goals through the different steps through. So, um, like I said, I want to give Jake the credit for that, um, to come in with a fresh set of eyes into the city, looking at the city's documents and, and being able to, to, to do this. And hopefully if the council likes it, this is probably the format of a, of a comprehensive plan amendment that I'd probably like to see going forward as well.
Yeah. And I, I personally really appreciate it. He did it very quickly, I will add, like it was really good work. And efficiently done and, um, just did a great job of kind of nesting things where they made sense. So I will also give lots of credit to Jake on that one.
Counselor, on you.
Matt, uh, Rod from city council. I want to get back to the mayor's comment. If there are several ways to look at a number about buildable and available lands, et cetera, we should write the comments to our advantage and not the state's and preferably not to the advantage of the gorge commission, saying we have more available land. Choice in how things are worded or numbers that are projected. You need to use that to our advantage, not to the gorge commission's advantage or anybody else that has to do with us.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Josh, um, and Matt for your kind words. So the reason that I took this, this direction towards it is I wanted to look at it from both the business perspective as well as staff's perspective. This section, goal nine, is you are the legislative body. This is your directives. And this is where I hope you take what, what staff has done and you guys delve into it and really make changes or update it however you see fit. This is your part. And the reason that I wanted to do that with the goals is because I looked at it from the, the perspective of a potential business who wants to relocate here and they're going to go through a conditional use permit process. And in order to do that, they have to look at the economic goals and policies. And they need to be able to point directly to those goals and policies that are going to support their application. And that's why it's written that way. The implementation side is more for directive. When I, when I started, I came in here and I said, well, what's my directives? And we had some documents from 2019, but they never got adopted. And so I've been kind of using those as my guiding principle. But when you look at those implementation measures, that's, that's your direction to staff of this is what you're going to go do. And the hope is, is that once you, you as the legislative body can take this and refine it, then we can move into a full comprehensive economic development strategy that really is, is the marching orders for staff to go forward and, and do good work. And so that's, that's the reason that I kind of designed it the way it is. And I would hope that you rip it up, tear it up, make it yours, because you are the legislative authority, not, not staff. Thank you.
Yeah. So I guess to that end, you know, if you have thoughts, um, about any changes, having looked at it before this evening to pass along, we would love to hear them. If, um, you want to take a little more time to kind of look at it and dig into it, um, then, you know, please do that. Please provide some comments on these goals and policies and implementation measures to, to staff and they can communicate that to us and then we can make some changes to that. But yeah, any, anything you've got to tell us tonight, we'd love to hear it. Anything you have to tell us subsequent to that, we'd love to hear that too. And, um, I think Josh, I, I'll try not to steal too much of your thunder here, but I think we want to take the time to get this right. And so, you know, we don't want to rush adoption of this. But, and we do want to hear comments from you. This has been, I think, just the comments so far have been really helpful in terms of some changes that we can make. But, you know, uh, if you have individual comments that you want to pass along, you know, in the next, I won't set a deadline for you. I'll let, let Josh do it. But, you know, next couple of weeks or something like that, then we can make sure we have things in, in really good shape for you. Hopefully, um, prior to an adoption process. So, yeah, anything else you have to say, we'd love to hear it. And also happy to hold off. So. That, that sound okay, Josh? Anything to add to that?
No, I think that's good. I mean, we've, we've really, you know, ultimately targeted this sometime towards by the end of the year, we'd like to move forward with adoption of this. Um, so we will work, you know, I'll, I'll circle back with Matt and our team to figure out and, you know, come up with a good timeline or deadline for any additional comments that come in. And then we would, we would anticipate moving through the adoption process. So like I said, that we wanted this to be a conversation tonight, and I think it's been a good conversation. We appreciate everybody's input. Um, I think it's just, yeah, it's going to make something that's like truly for the Dalles and not, um, just a checkbox really. So, um, we will work in some timelines and reach out to you accordingly and go from there.
So does the, does the plan commission formally approve this and does the city council at some?
Yeah. So the steps will be, we will, we would go through a process. It would go to planning commission first, and then we will go to city council who will adopt this. Yeah. So we had, you know, a tentative timeline of starting this adoption process sometime in September, but we're happy to extend the timeline. If council, I guess we can make the decision now if council would like, or, or even the commission would like to get more comments in on this before we make the changes that we already know we're going to make and then bring it in front of planning commission. So maybe that's a kind of a consensus for the team on, if you'd like a little bit more time to digest the information or whatever you'd like to do.
So. So we, so normal planning commission meetings would be on September 4th and then again on September 18th. Do we feel like, so one, two, two weeks is enough time for people to submit comments and two weeks enough time to bring something to that September 4th planning commission meeting or?
Yeah, no. So what we, with adoption process for this, any change to your zoning code or your comprehensive plan has to go through a PAPA process, which is a 35 day notice before the meeting. So that is something we have to bake into this. So, um, you know. Yeah. October at the earliest would be if we were to, to move forward with the process right after this meeting effectively. So.
Yeah, but I'd say if we set, let's say if it was two weeks to get additional comments, then we'd want to have probably a week or two to update the documents, then the 35 day notice. And then the first day after the 35 day notice that planning commission was going to meet, that'd be the first hearing. That's kind of how the schedule would likely shake out. But I think you tell us what's a reasonable, you know, deadline to get additional comments to us if you have them.
Does everyone seem agreeable that, uh, September 4th would, yeah, September 4th be a good deadline to have additional comments put in? Additional thoughts just submitted to staff? That's two weeks.
You're talking to just plan commission, right?
Uh, no, I think this, I think this applies to full, full discussion, like full group, full discussion submitted to staff. And they can digest it. It'd be presented to planning commission and sometime in October after that 35 day date.
Well, just a heads up, but the only thing I just want to see, uh, that, that number, you know, I alluded to, Matt, the 2101.6, what it was, what was presented to the city council, that number two years ago or three years ago?
Yeah, I think we'd be happy to sort of provide you with the, the similar table that we.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, we'll, we'll kind of do that as a follow-up to this, because I think that'll be helpful. And you'll also just kind of see like, again, how some of the constrained acreages changed a little bit.
Right.
Yeah. So, uh, we're happy to do that. The other thing we'll make sure we'll do is, um, you know, have a copy of this, um, presentation available for y'all as well.
One more, one more question.
If I may, um, this would be an appropriate time during this two week period where we can submit ideas to staff about incentives for either available lands, like we talked about earlier with the dark window ordinances or, um, recommending, thinking about incentives for private landowners and making their parcel sizes smaller to achieve the small and small medium type sizes, right?
Yeah, yeah, effectively. Okay. Yeah, it wouldn't be, you know, it'd be dependent on, you know, how specific you're going to get. Typically a comp plan wouldn't be extremely specific to go, I don't know. Create this incentive for this type of thing, but I think there's probably some language that we could explore that kind of guides the way.
Yeah. And, and our last thing I'll just mention is, I mean, I think we want to allow some time to get any additional comments that the things you've already said to us tonight, you know, we'll already plan on addressing. And it's not that you can't make additional changes during the adoption process. You can. But we ideally, when we send something out with that 35 day notice, you know, we're hoping it's something that's getting pretty close at least. Um, and does reflect the comments that you've made, um, up to that point. So that's kind of our goal is to, is to take something into the adoption process that's, you know, as best as we can reflects what we've heard.
Okay. And you're just, you're just delineating between goals and policy is what you're going to say.
My, my thought, you know, what, what you were mentioning, that would, that would be a policy of which, um, the, the city would then look at of incentivizing, um, the separation of the larger parcels into smaller parcels. And that's something that when an applicant comes in to actually do that job, they can point to the policy and say, it's in your policy to support this for economic development. And I see that as an absolutely a great one.
It, that could be recommended.
That could be recommended. Yes, please do. And I'm personally, if, if you get a chance to, to go through that, um, section, all those goals and policies, I'm, I'm happy to meet individually with each one of you, um, to talk your way through it, because we want to make this, this is representing you and your thoughts, not, not just staff. So I'm willing to take all the time necessary to, to work your way through it.
Okay. Any other comments, suggestions, questions? Does everybody feel we have a road forward that is clear? Okay. All right. Is there any other business that come before this? This, um, group? You want to adjourn the meeting?
I shall.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.